We're going to start it here. We're going to file to order this regular meeting of the Miami Special Utility Authority for Tuesday, June 2nd. Second item on the agenda is a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
MSU.
You might look in the council meeting. All right. Let me...
You want to...
I raised it twice and I still have it on. All right. The second item is the invocation by the retired director of missions, Pastor Darryl Aldire.
Let's pray together. Precious Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming before you. You've invited us to come boldly to the throne of grace that we may have time and help and find mercy in time of need. And Father, we come today praying for the needs of our country. We pray, Father, first of all, for the men and women who are serving in uniform and scattered places throughout the world. We pray, Father, for your hand of protection upon them. We pray, Father, for the leaders of our nation, that you'd give them wisdom and understanding, that they would seek your mind and your guidance in all that they do. We pray, Heavenly Father, for our city. We thank you, Father, for these men who have generously given of their time and their energy and their wisdom to serve in guiding their city. And we pray, Father, that everything they do and the decisions they're made are made, Father, in accordance with your will. That, Father, nothing would be done out of strive for vain glory, but, Father, seeking only the benefit and the welfare of all of our citizens. Help us, Father, to be a godly people. Help us, Father, to be always mindful that there will come a day of judgment in which we will all stand before you. And, Father, we ask and thank you for the salvation we have because of the sacrifice of Christ on the cross. Bless this meeting tonight, and your will be done and all this said and done. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Brian. Please, please.
Follow me on the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Item number four is public... I'm not making sure I'm on the wrong agenda. Yep, public input and unscheduled personal appearances. Is anyone in the audience that wants to address the authority on any of the agenda items? There being none. Item five is a consent agenda. Staff is recommending items six through 10 for the consent agenda. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Item number 11 is approval of a resolution establishing policy and forms requiring code compliance for structures which have not had municipal utility services in excess of one year. And I've got Chuck and Travis down for that.
Council, how are you tonight?
Good.
And Travis. As I've said before, back in 2007 is basically when the walk-throughs for utilities started. When someone comes in and they want to set utilities on an account and it's been vacant for a year or more, we require a walk-through. This has kind of gone into more of a home inspection by some outside entities besides the customer. And we generate a letter of deficiencies per the code and...
A letter of what?
Of deficiencies.
Deficiencies, okay.
Yes, per the code. We'll cite the code, but I believe this is... The city has become... It's made the city more liable on what they do and what they don't do, even though the letter will state these deficiencies. I have a sample letter here. I brought a sample letter to kind of read to you what they... Or how they're outlined. A walk-through at the above address was conducted on a specific date. Please reference the 2009 International Code, Residential Code. Below code violations, safety hazards must be resolved before utilities can be released. So, and I've got six deficiencies on this particular letter, but I think at the end of the day, when the contractor goes out to fix these efficiencies, there may be something we missed. They use the same code book I use, but they'll just fix just what's on the list. So, we want to try to get the liability off of us and put it on the account holder based on getting the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing contractor's signatures, them signing off saying, "This house, this address is code compliant per this trade." Then we would obviously verify that their state license, city license, things like that. And you've got the form in front of you.
It's in your packet.
It is in the online packet.
But we've basically, again, outlined it as where the electrical contractor will sign off with his state license number, mechanical contractor, plumbing contractor. And then at the bottom, the signature of the customer saying that they understand the above guidelines, and if any violations are found, a permit will be obtained. Also, if they see any structural damage, any health hazards, mold, anything like that, they will report it to us and we'll take further action.
David, how do other communities deal with this perception issue? The perception that we're saying everything is okay simply because we are identifying specific deficiencies?
I've talked to different communities and I get as many responses as people I talk to. Something that Travis and Chuck had discussed with me occasionally for a while was this perception, I think, that they felt they were at risk of performing this sort of preoccupancy inspection, when really that's not their intent. And I believe their intent is evidenced by the proposed resolution is to, you know, properly, when you've had a dwelling or a structure unoccupied for a year, ask the utility applicant to hire their own licensed agents to certify that the premises are code compliant. And they asked me to prepare that document, and that's what I've done.
And even though in the letter, in the letters of deficiencies, we'll put, "The following violations were found, but not limited to," they still stick to exactly what's there in front of them.
I'd like to add one thing to this proposal. It's not only that the concern about the liability for the city doing this, because generally speaking, somebody that has a piece of private property should not have the city actually doing an inspection of that property from that, from this aspect. That's not what our time and energy should be geared toward. But also, what we're trying to do here is streamline the process, because very often our schedules might not allow people to be there on a timely basis. It could take some time for us to get there, it could take some time to write everything up, and in the interim, you have some people that are looking to try to get into a house. So, what we're trying to do in this process is just to let people know upfront, if it hasn't been without utilities, get your plumber, get your heating and air persons, get your electricians in there, have the inspections, certify it, bring it here, we turn on the electricity. So, it will actually be quicker for the citizens as well to be able to do this, but we have the assurances that it's been inspected properly.
Well, there's kind of two different issues. One is the 12-month thing, and the other is this perception, as you described it last time, that just because we're doing an inspection, that we're giving it, you know, the gold seal of approval.
That's right.
And so, I understand this is dealing with the 12-month thing, and I like that. Does this also take care of the first instance, in your opinion? Or how are you dealing with that? Or is this dealing with that at all?
As far as...
The perception that once you, as the city inspector, say everything's okay, that, you know, there's not termites or something in the house, or whatever the concern was you expressed last...
Right. They basically take it and run with it. And again, like I said before, those contractors use the same book I use, and if they see something, and I've had them tell me before, they've seen something, "Well, what about this? It wasn't on the letter. I'm just going to fix what's on the letter. This is what you signed off on." Well, I'll tell them, "Well, if you've seen that, I didn't, you need to fix that also."
Doesn't that protect the homeowner as well as the city as well? Just an example, if you've got a crack in the heat exchanger and the furnace is going to put carbon monoxide in the house, and you can't check that?
Yeah, right.
So, that's just one example of probably many...
Exactly. Yeah.
It also helps, I think, extract the city from issues that are more properly addressed by the landlord-tenant relationship rather than by the city. If you'll notice, the form is an attachment to the utility services application process. And if that process using independent, locally licensed contractors reveals issues that should be addressed, it keeps that issue between the tenant and landlord, whether it's commercial or residential landlord. Doesn't put the city inspector in the position of not wanting to say something for fear of offending a landlord, for example. It takes the city inspector out of the position of saying something to a tenant that might be viewed as a representation that everything's fine. It maintains the privacy of that relationship between those individually contracting parties. I think that's a plus.
Neil, did you have something?
Actually, Mayor, you asked the question I kind of had, but I also... This is only applies to premises that's been out of utilities for one year.
One year or more.
Okay.
Or more.
Yeah.
Not total time, but in the most recent, consistent, continual, one-year-plus period.
Okay. That's what I was in real...
Yes, sir.
And frankly, we hope we get a lot of these. Be nice to have people going back to these properties.
I have no.
You want for motion to approve?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, item 11. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye. David, just to be clear, this, the agenda items says a resolution and...
It is. So, there's a formal resolution in your packet.
Okay.
And the resolution references the two attached certification forms.
They wouldn't just take effect 30 days or...
No, as it's a resolution, it would take effect immediately.
Okay, okay.
Now, you could establish a later date if you wished, but otherwise, resolution's going to affect immediately now.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 12, new business. Dean, or anyone having a new business?
Not on this agenda, Your Honor.
Staff reports, reports in your packet are available. Staff is present for questions. There are non-trusty community announcements, any announcements?
Next meeting.
And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to move now into the regular meeting of the Miami City Council for today's date. Item number two is public hearing on the proposed FY 2015-2016 budget. This public hearing is called for any member of the public to present to the governing body comments, recommendations, or information on any part of the proposed budget. And Jill, I'll turn it over to you. Do you have some comments?
Just a few. Just kind of wanted to hit the highlights again.
Okay.
We published the summary per the state statute, the 24th of May. In this summary, there's some things that will change when we bring it back to you on the 16th. The biggest change will be our carryover numbers, because we'll be closer to the end of the year, we'll have better numbers closer to where we're at. We're projecting that the carryover number is actually going to be higher than what we presented at the budget sessions. But we have the floods, we have some extra expenses coming out of that, so we're, you know, we'll get there when we get there, I guess. We'll see what we spend out. But I just want to tell you, this will change a little bit on the 16th. We still need to manage that carryover number, because this year, this year, our carryover was a little over $3 million. So, we need to manage the expenses and kind of figure out, and I know that's what we're going to be doing with the comprehensive plan, figuring out our mission, I just kind of wanted to say that again. We did budget flat. This budget includes 182 full-time people, 32 part-time, and 56 seasonal. Some of the significant transfers that are coming would be like a million to the Street and Alley Fund, 2.7 million to the General Fund, $83,000 and some change to the Rainy Day Fund, $160,000 to the MDRA Fund, and the reason why that's so high is because we're moving personnel back into the funds that they belong in, and that's one of them. 100... I'm sorry, 1.4 million to the Capital Improvement Fund, and we're no longer... We're going to eliminate the Personnel Fund, so all... So, some of the transfers will look a little different from last year because we have Personnel Fund. So, those are kind of the highlights that I wanted to point out. If you have any specific questions or...
Dean, do you want to speak to the million-dollar transfer into the Street and Alley Fund? What's going on there? What are your thoughts?
Our million dollars...
I should say.
Our million dollars into the Street and Alley Fund is to start augmenting what we have, the leftovers from the bond issues that took place for street and alleys. And we hope that right after the first of the year, probably one of our first meetings in July, we're going to be bringing to you a program for some additional street repairs. I believe this budget, when we complete everything, will probably have about $3 million available for...
In the Street and Alley Fund?
In the Street and Alley Fund. I think that is a target that you established last year during the budget, so we believe very strongly to get that done as well. But also, since it's kind of taking the bond funds and then also doing this transfer, we're kind of looking at this as kind of phase two of a number of street and alley projects. So, again, Tyler and Joe are already looking at our, you know, what our issues are going to be. We're going to try to stretch our dollars as much as possible, maybe doing some more spot repairs rather than complete street rebuilds, and just try to get our streets in better shape. And we want to get that plan to you so you can look at it, so the citizens can look at it, so everybody understands the next phase, what we're going to be doing.
Okay. And so, you see this as an ongoing program, then, every summer, hopefully, a million, having a million dollars or so...
Yes, yes, Your Honor. I think that's at the very least. I do hope sometime in the not-too-distant future, when we're working with our bond council, that sometime in the future, we may want to have maybe like a second phase of the bonds to be able to extend our sales tax maybe a little bit further. It would not be an increase in taxes, but yet be able to stretch our sales tax a little bit longer to be able to have additional bonds. We're getting four things that we hear about completely, you know, constantly through the comprehensive plan program. One is our infrastructure, specifically our streets. The other is economic development. The other is community development and code enforcement. So, these are the items that we really are emphasizing in this budget.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Dean or for Jill? Okay. Then we will close this public hearing on the proposed FY 2015-2016 budget and anticipate voting on it formally in the next council meeting, right, Jill? Okay.
Does anyone want to speak?
Excuse me? Does anyone that wants to speak address the staff or council on the budget? Okay, thank you.
There's one other final thing I'd just like to say very quickly. I said this during our public hearing on the budget, on our budget workshops, but this budget is very much a team effort. We had all of our departments very much active in this, a lot of give and take that took place, especially with Mikey. Different things that we knew we couldn't afford, but yet tried to plan things out and tried to make sure that with a flat organization, maybe some departments had facilities that could help other departments out. So, we really... Excuse me.
Go ahead.
We really tried to work that way, more than anything else, to get everybody involved. We are not going to be buying any more paper clips in this organization, though, so I know we got to pull over the place here. But then the final thing I wanted to, I wanted to thank Lindsey and Jill again, because I gave them some very broad guidelines of what I wanted to see in the budget, especially trying to get back to what we call best practices and government finance officers' guidelines on how we put a budget together, and they've done a tremendous job. So, I just wanted to thank them very much again in a public setting.
Okay. Any other last comments before we close the budget hearing? There being none, the hearing is closed. We will move to item three, which is public input and unscheduled personal appearances. Anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on any of the council agenda There being none. Item four is a consent agenda. Staff is recommending items four through 12. If there are no questions on any of those issues, I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
And I'll second that.
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
That takes us to item 13, presentation of fiscal year 13-14 audit financial statements. Mr. Turner, you are on. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the report. I think you've got electronic plus paper copy. As you aware, Crawford Associates actually prepare the reports, and then we do our audit work, and we've just been going back and forth trying to get issues resolved and all that kind of information. Hopefully, we now have the report where we're at least current as far as we can get. I know we've talked about this before, that we want to get to that point where we're completely current, and so hopefully for next year, we can look at being finished no later than March 31st, so we can do our federal program stuff and be completely done. So, with that said, the report's a long report. As you saw, you know, there's 100 pages of practically stuff here that we want to talk about or they can talk about, but we don't want to go through all that, I don't think. The first thing you run into is the auditor's report. That's pretty well a standard report, no exceptions, so good shape there. Then you have the management's discussion and analysis over on page H where that starts in. And when Gatsby 34 came out, that was one of the things they put into the reports, was this MDNA, and the reason for that was for, to basically condense down a huge report like you have here to items that they feel the public would want to know about. And so, to me, this is a good place for someone that doesn't like to go through all the numbers, you know, to go through the narrative and basically get a real gist of what we've done. And probably the very first thing on those highlights, it says that we had $2,200,000 of net position increase. That's basically an increase in equity. I mean, that's a big positive, as far as I'm concerned, for any town that I deal with in this time periods. General Fund had unsigned fund balance of roughly $632,000. That was another item that, again, like I say, that with a lot of the towns I deal with right now, you know, we can see positive feedback on as far as revenue and expenses go, and you guys really did that this year. I think you have a good report here, basically. Over on nine, it just gives a reader about who we are, about our blending component units, discreetly presented component units. It tells the reader again what makes up, you know, our report here. And there's a number of entities, especially those discreetly presented. We've got about five trust authorities there that we go through every year trying to get that information all together to, you know, get that presented. Then 10 talks about the city as a whole, about reporting as a whole. 11 talks about fund financials, and again, that was the Gatsby 34 thing. When they came out, they wanted us to present both a government-wide that shows the whole entity situation with all the funds together, and then still go back to fund accounting like we've always done in the past with, you know, fund by fund breakdowns. And so, basically, you have two presentations here, if you want to call it a balance sheet, and income savings situation. Then on 12, there's a little bit of recap there with some numbers, and this is basically our net position, and you can see there at the bottom of that first little statement there, we talked about net position, that we are down a little bit from the year before, about $200,000 there in total net position on the governmental side, but on the business side, PWA and whatnot, we're up about $3 million there, or almost $3 million. So, again, you know, it's a good position to be in as far as those activities are concerned. And then down at the bottom, it goes into a little breakdown of the governmental activities, why we have decreases and increases there. Again, good information to look at. Over on 13, the same kind of situation with the business activities. It talks about, you know, those specifics that are highlighted there that about our increases and decreases. For instance, assets are up, current liabilities are up, but long-term liabilities are down, that kind of situation. And at the bottom of 13, there's a, again, another little recap, not as detailed as the financials, but basically talks about where we stand for net position 13 and 14. And this is the only place you're going to see those comparatives. We don't do that in the audit itself, but they are on this financial statement. So, you can see that basically the governmental activities last year had a $14 million deficit as far as equity, as the net position was concerned, and this year, we have $198,000. So, it's quite a drop. But then, and even on the business activity side, you're seeing there, they had roughly $11 million the year before and only $2.4 million this year. So, part of that shift got put into, we had some transfers coming over, roughly $2.6 million was transferred from the utilities to the general government. 14, again, is kind of little highlights of those changes and talking about the decrease in the general government and decrease in public safety expenses or operation cost. And then roughly that $1.3 million in grants and contributions from the FAA grant that we got this year. That was a big boost as far as we're concerned, too. Maybe over on 15, a little thing I thought was maybe interesting there, it says, "All utilities saw an increase in the net revenues due to the second year of our rate increases." So, I know we talked about that a little bit last year, that, you know, we had increased rates, we thought we'd see some change, and we did. So, there's that. And then the airport operation, that capital grant we got for the runway construction was another plus as far as we were concerned. And 16, there's just a breakdown on the capital assets, roughly what our additions were for the street projects was over $2 million, and the airport improvement was $1.6 million. So, again, you know, these numbers are in the reports, but they're not, they don't stick out like they do here. Long-term debt, $1.8 million down from what it was the year before, so we had some payoffs of some long-term debt. Then on 17, it talks about the upcoming year. Well, we're almost through with the upcoming year, so again, you can see that some of those things that they came up with that I think works out for us as far as what our situation's been this year. And then over on page 20 is where the audit actually starts, the audit numbers start in there. And again, like I say, there's a lot of this that I don't think we need to go through. It's some of the same information that was on that MDNA. Maybe on 21 there, it talks a little bit about, that's the net revenue for both the general government and for the business activities, and you can see that it's showing us about $197,000, like they lost, or almost $198,000, we said earlier, for the governmental activities. And then that $2.4 million increase as far as the business activities were concerned. And again, like I say, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a huge positive for And it goes on and on with, the next thing's going to be the fund balances. I don't know that we need to talk with different funds, other than maybe on 24, on that set of financials, it says that our change in funds was, General Fund was roughly $695,000 down. The street project was $1.8 million down, again, because we used those funds to do things with. And then the other governmental funds were up about $800,000. 25 is just a little recap of running from the fund balance, that $7 million on the funds, to the government-wide to the $23 million. Basically, it's going to be assets added, a number of capital lease things, I mean, just notes payable changes, those kind of things are all involved there. notes payable changes, those kind of things are all involved there. And twenty-six is this, some kind of situation for net position reconciliations. That's going from the governmental funds of the million seven down to the hundred and ninety-seven, hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Again, those two funds, like I say, I mean, those two presentations are almost cash to approval. I mean, if, if you understand the counting and you've been through that, that's basically what we're doing is, is showing all those things, showing the assets that we have plus the liabilities in this case too. So that's, that's, just a recap is what this is, just tying those two statements together. Again, proprietary fund on twenty-eight, there's a real detail. There's the balance sheet side. And then on twenty-nine, there's our detail on revenue and expenses for the business activities. And again, it gets us back to that same thing. And, and it does break it down with the special utility authority, what it did versus what the airport fund, because those two are separate in this situation here. But with a total then of roughly two million dollars worth of net change in possession. So, and then about another million two on the internal service funds. So again, you know, the bottom line is, you guys really had a good year, I think. I mean, from what I'm looking at, things worked out really well for the city of Miami last year.
So really, timing this is our only issue right now.
It is.
At March thirty-one deadline, we missed by a month and a half or so.
When we started off, we were about two or three years behind.
Right.
And we keep working our way up. And I, I thought, you know, I talked to Jill back in probably October sometime. We thought then, we're going to get all this stuff closed out and be almost finished by year end. And so easily make our March thirty-one deadline for the feds. Well, we got hold up on a couple of those public trusts that somebody else was auditing. And so we had to wait around on that and wait around. And so we just, I mean, she was making calls and I was making calls. So we finally got us to the point where, you know, we did get it in and we're here. So hopefully, for next year, we can get this thing resolved and go forward. I think we've had a change in that firm that was doing it. And so hopefully, that's going to help us out then. So we'll see if that works.
And so the, the, as a practical matter, the cost to the city is because we're, because we're not classified as a low-risk R T, you have to do extra steps in the audit. And that takes time and that means money.
Right. That's, that finding that's in the bag, that last thing I've got is our finding about that we didn't file timely with the federal clearinghouse. That's a big issue anymore. Used to, that wasn't such a big problem. But now the feds are involved, if they're given money, they want to know about it.
Right.
And the reason that we are not low risk is because we're late. I mean, that's, that's our issue. And the problem is that once we're late with them, we got to wait two years before we get off of that settling list. So, you know, we're going, and, and yes, that's exactly the answer is that that forces us to do double the test work that we would do normally. And the, i- if we are considered low risk, then we have to test twenty-five percent of all of our federal monies. And if we are not low risk, we have to look at fifty percent of the monies. That's exactly the case. Okay?
Any questions for Bill? Or do you want to talk about your last page or Nick's last, your signature that says everything is good? Maybe you've touched on that already, page ninety-one, two and three, basically?
Yep. That's, those two reports there is, basically, we have three reports. The, the independent auditor's report at the front, which says we were fine. And then on ninety and, ninety and ninety-one, or eighty-nine and ninety, we also have to do one on compliance with laws and regulations and compliance with internal control. I mean, that's basically, we have to opine on that, and we've done that. And then the second one is, if we're considered a single audit, have more than five hundred thousand federal program expenditures, which we had roughly a million four last year, then, then you will see this report also. And it basically says the same thing, that, you know, the only issue we had was it was late filing. I mean, all, all expenditures were fine, had no, no errors that we ran into there. So again, like I say, as far as I'm concerned, you guys were really in good shape this year.
Okay, good deal. Any questions for Bill?
Well, sure.
Any comments, Dean?
Not at all.
Okay.
I mean, Jill said I could speak three or four hours if I wanted to.
[laughing]
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's really no action item there, right, Dean, to just receive in the audit?
That's correct. You're receiving the audit.
Item fourteen, memorandum of understanding with Qua-Paw tribal fire department. David, that's got your name next to it.
We have representatives of the Qua-Paw tribal fire department here.
Welcome, gentlemen.
The, some months ago, the Qua-Paw tribal fire department and EMS recommended and proposed a mutual aid agreement between the tribal services and the city of Miami. Staff, and certainly I myself, recommended the council approve the agreement. We're certainly here to answer. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. I know that the city manager has discussed the issues with the fire chief. Chief Klein's also present. Other than that, I don't know which way to go. I'm certainly ready to answer any questions.
Can you just, Dean, can you just give us a quick rundown of the benefits to the citizens of Miami of this agreement?
I'd be, I'd be very happy to. I'm going to start off by saying we're incredibly proud of our fire department. We have a very good one. A few things we need to improve upon, mostly on physical structure, our fire stations. But when it comes to apparatus, when it comes to training, and when it comes to spirit of our firefighters, they're, they're probably second to none. And I'm very proud of them. However, the Qua-Paws, over the last few years, have developed their own fire department. Some of it is some of the leftover equipment from the pitcher fire department, but also through their resources, they've been able to develop an equally impressive firefighting service. And I've, I've had the opportunity to tour their fire station on sixty-nine alternative. And it's, it's a very impressive function. And in fact, we've even had some discussions about mutual training and things such as that with them. So they've developed one. And in fact, I even noticed in the paper that they just were recently granted an I S O two.
Wow.
Which is, which is a big accomplishment for any fire department. For the record, ours is on I S O three. So what, they have approached us and asked us basically if we would consider this. Now, a mutual aid agreement is just basically an agreement by which if we need some additional assistance, we will provide the assistance to them if they need it, or they will provide the assistance to us, especially in a, a large fire situation or a large rescue situation. We just are recognizing that we have these two fire services within very close proximity to each other. There is one element in there that I, I do want to point out that's more of an, of an automatic aid rather than a mutual aid, in which their proposal is that for any facility that would be very, that would be closer to their facility within our city limits rather than our stations, they would be the first to arrive, and they would be the first to be dispatched. But also, in those cases, we would still be dispatching our apparatus and our equipment as well. And we would be in command of that structure or, or that situation, whatever it is, which simply means that in that area of town, yet they would actually have people even arriving faster than we could be able to arrive, but they would still be under the guise and under, under the Miami Fire Department, just the same as if we arrived to help the Qua-Paw Fire Department. The Qua-Paw Fire Department system is, is under that. So that in essence is how it would work in a very, very short description that Ronnie helped me be able to explain in just a few short minutes. But what that really means is that our, our two fire departments, which are very good fire departments, are now working together. One final benefit, I believe, to Miami. And when I had my tour of the fire station with the Qua-Paw Fire Station, they even mentioned it as well, that by entering into an agreement like this, we're going to be taking a look at our I S O rating. And it's very possible by having a mutual aid agreement with their fire station, it might even actually improve Miami's I S O as well. Because while we're a three, we'd like to look at eventually becoming an I S O two as well. That's good for our community and it's good for our service. And so that's why we have it before you today. And, and we have chiefs in the audience, if you want to ask them questions technically about how it will work.
Well, actually, you answered one of mine. So if it's in our district, our, our fire department is in command of that.
That is correct.
Okay.
Although there may be times when the Qua-Paw Fire Department arrives first.
Right.
And, and, and that's the benefit, is they will arrive first, they, they provide the first aid. But when we come in, we're in command of that situation. The opposite is also true. We are providing mutual aid to them, they are in command.
Sure. Well, I think it's great.
I do too. I would congratulate you.
Gentlemen, did I, did I do it right? Come on up. Yeah, please. Ronnie, you too.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Jeff Reeves. I'm the fire EMS director for the Qua-Paw tribe. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, but, yeah, we, we, we work together already. It's not something that we don't already do. This just kind of formalizes the, you know, the agreement that we will come to, to, to aid and they will come to our aid if needed. We have these agreements in place with a lot of different entities throughout three different states, actually. So, just to give you a real quick rundown, what we, what we do, we have three stations. We have a station at Downstream Casino. If you've, don't go out back, you don't ever see it. It's kind of back on the backside. And we also keep an EMS unit in windup. So we have ten guys a shift on, so we can bring in, you know, multiple personnel and multiple units if need be, just like, you know, Chief Klein can offer up the same thing that us can do. So I think it's a great, a great agreement. It's a great thing for our, our county. Our county has came so far as far as fire EMS I S O ratings, savings to our, our citizens, huge savings throughout the whole county. And I think this could really benefit everybody involved as far as helping some I S O issues. So we're, we're glad to be here.
Chief, I remember when Miami went from a four to a three, what a big deal that was to us back then. So to, to hear that you guys have a two, that's just phenomenal. And if it can help us get closer to that, then that's really meaningful to our citizens. And we, we appreciate the opportunity to work together.
I think that there are very few fire companies in the nation that have achieved a one.
Very few.
Basically.
There's one in Oklahoma.
Basically, when you can get to a two, that's about as good as you can get.
We, we did a little research. We got our notification the other day. And on the Midwest City Fire Department, which just happens to be the one, the one-one instead of Oklahoma, they, they had the breakdown. And there's seven other class twos in Oklahoma and that's it. And so it's, it's something that we've worked really hard to, to get to. And, and we, we do treasure our relationship we have. And like I said, we, we already work together. We come over and they come to help us. It's just, it's just kind of formality, of course.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Gentlemen, again, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Entertaining motion to approve?
Oh, Mike got motion, Ronnie.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Sharbit?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye. Item fifteen, ordinance changing the name of the Miami Municipal Airport to the Miami Regional Airport and filing it on the record with the U S Department of Transportation and the F A A. Tyler?
Yes, sir. Currently, the Oklahoma Air Nautical Commission, O A C, they classify Miami's airport as a regional business airport. We've never officially changed the name to Miami Regional Airport. So they asked that we have an ordinance to change the name to Miami Regional Airport. And we also have to make adjustment on the form that it talks about and put on there Miami Regional Airport and send that to the F A A to officially change our, our name.
And that, that being designated regional allows us to qualify for additional funding, doesn't it?
Yes, sir. And it just, I guess for pilots, it means we're a larger airport. You know, we have fuel, we have after-hours fueling and different things.
Any questions for Tyler?
I do. Do, do you think you're recommending an emergency clause or not? Is there any advantage?
It's not really a need. I mean.
Thank you.
Tyler, I, I think one thing to talk about very quickly, and I think it's very positive, is that I believe we're very close to be talking about an.
F B O.
F B O.
Yes, sir.
At the fire department, or at the fire department, that's what I'm thinking of, at the airport, which will also be able to help with what we're trying to do with this designation and provide additional services at the airport.
So what does that acronym mean?
So that person will.
Fixed Based Operator.
Okay.
So we would have somebody there that would be able to take care of planes, help with fueling, things such as that, which are the kind of services the aviators look for. And that's what we're lacking right now at the airport. And again, Tyler, and I think Kim has been helping, been working very hard, and we'll be bringing you some options for an F B O, I hope, in the very near future.
F B Os are typically independent contractors.
Maintenance and all that.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Most approved.
And a second? Second. Roll call.
Sharbit?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye. Items seventeen, eighteen, are you going to pull those?
We'd like to delay those until our second meeting in June because we have another ordinance that we're working on that'll kind of go hand in hand with this one. And it's better to consider them together.
Okay. Item nineteen is new business. Dean, anything there?
Not new business. No, I do have some, a few things under communications.
Okay. Staff reports, if staff's available, if you have any questions on anything. If not, community announcements. Neil, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sure Dean's going to touch on it, but I want to touch on it too. Rockdale Bridge was opened up the other day. Our crew's done a great job. I'd like to thank the county commissioners too, for their partnership. That was very much appreciated. We all, we all appreciate that.
I think that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just saying, I think that saved the taxpayers several hundred thousand dollars having the benefit of, you know, using the county's expertise. And I think Tyler, are we, is there another road, a bridge we're going to partner with them pretty soon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. I think that's a, a good example of the two governments working together and saving taxpayers money. Any other announcements?
Just like to thank Glenda for keeping us posted these past two weeks with the water. She's been very busy. Thank you for your.
She has. She's been out putting sticks in the ground, marking all water parks too. Putting her husband to work. He thought he was retired. Item twenty-two, city manager's communications.
Well, actually, I'm going to ask Glenda to come to the podium because she and I are going to talk a little bit about that, Neil.
Okay.
About the water. But one thing I'd like to talk about is, yesterday, we had Colonel Pratt and also John Roberts, I believe, of the United States Army Corps of Engineers. They were doing a tour of the inundated areas. And the mayor and Glenda and I were able to go around town with him yesterday to, to basically show the effects of this high water. I think I wanted to point out that while we had high water, Glenda and I were in a, basically a phone conversation with the entire state in which the governor handled it. And they are believing that there will probably be fifty-five of our seventy-seven counties that will be in disaster areas because of this flooding. The, it, it was so widespread. And we've kept a very close eye on the lake levels. And we're keeping, we're still keeping a close eye on it. They're talking about the possibility that through the entire month of June, that they're going to be doing flood releases because of how surcharged some of the southern lakes have been going into the Arkansas River system. I know right now, the Arkansas River system around Muskogee that they're concerned about because there, there are all sorts of bottlenecks and all that in the plumbing, and that's what they're having to deal with right now. But all throughout, it, it looked like they were really keeping an eye on areas that, unfortunately, there were some areas because of where the rain fell, they had to get flooded, but they made sure that areas that didn't need to be flooded, didn't get flooded. So definitely, we had high water. We had areas in the water. But, you know, I think the, the proudest achievement we had is we didn't have to pull the pumps from the big pool. And we're able to keep that going. And we're still doing our, our analysis on, on where we're at right now. So anyway, I wanted to thank Glenda too, because I know she, I, I had to yell at her in a meeting this morning because she was talking about more rain coming. And I'm just tired of hearing that. But, but basically, she's, she's done a terrific job. I also want to thank our county, our, our city employees, especially in our public works department, for putting up barricades, our parks department, especially people that are putting ruts in our parks. We're going to have to be dealing with that. And of course, our police and fire have done a, a great job through it all. So I, I know everybody was, in fact, the rumors were out there, it's going to be two thousand and seven all over again, not even close. And I think a lot of people were learning lessons from the past, keeping communication going. And, and we've gotten through this. So anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody along that line and where we're at. And I think that, I, I don't know if there's anything else, Glenda, that you want to add. I know you, you have the technical details a lot better than I do.
I think everybody got the latest update, but I just got another one. They just put us in a, a minor flood category instead of a moderate flood category. That means we are down to seventeen point eight eight feet at Commerce Step Ford as of five-thirty this evening. That's the lowest we've been in over a week. I know, and, and I'm like Dean now. I, I didn't do anything. I just put the information out there. The rest of the guys did all the hard work with the barricades and, and, and keeping our city safe. We, we stayed with the Army Corps and I know Dean was with G R D A. They listened very well. Had some comments today because I sent out, and I believe y'all got the pictures that I sent out. And I said, yay, we didn't have to pull the swimming pool pumps. And got lots of responses back from some, some key people in the state that said that was our goal. So. So, I think we're making some inroads. As of this evening, they are still letting out around thirty-nine thousand cubic feet per second, actually nearly forty, it's thirty-nine, seven, ninety-three, with an inflow of forty-two, one-twenty. I hope, but don't hold me to this, that maybe one-twenty-five could be open tomorrow. I know that is the other goal, because when the Corps was here yesterday, that was a major topic of how could we mitigate that. Colonel Pratt is going to get with some key people, and hopefully, we will be having some meetings about some mitigation ideas on one-twenty-five and some other areas in our town that makes our life difficult for especially our fire police and solid waste, so we brought that up to them. But as of now, I'm sorry, yes, we may have rain this weekend, but I'm hoping it's limited to twenty percent.
I have two last things I'd like to just follow up on. One is, we're also, we have our monster truck show at the fairgrounds. And a lot of places where people like to park, we're going to be a little nervous about that, because it's been underwater for the last week or so. So I know that our Parks people have been working with the promoter, but I would ask people if they are going to be going to the monster truck show to be very careful about where they park and maybe get there a little earlier, so if they have to be a little farther away, they may have to walk a bit. But I think it's still going to be a great show for the fairgrounds, but just be very careful on that. The last thing I'd like to point out, and with Melinda in the audience, I have received a lot of very positive comments about the letter that we have sent to G R D A in response to their request for a variance on the rule curve. And I think Melinda's article was very, did a very good job to explain to the public what this is about. We felt the need to do that, we do hope that there's some opportunities to be able to discuss this issue with G R D A, to be able to find solutions in a positive manner. But yet, if this application has been made, we had to have a response to it, and we believe that a lot more study on the Grand River system and especially the Neosho system, and how it affects Miami, needs to be done before we start talking about raising the rule curve on Grand Lake. And I think this high water event drives the point home. But I've had a lot of people giving me a thumbs up, saying, "Thank you very much for taking that stand," so I hope you've received the same thing. And that's my report.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Melinda. Item twenty-three is executive session, I don't think that that's going to be necessary tonight. Item twenty-four is fraternal order of police contract for the fiscal year fifteen sixteen. Dean, do you have any comments before we address that item?
Your honor, we had only one negotiating session with the fraternal order of police. They came to us and they basically asked for one change in the contract, the existing contract, and that is to change the weight on a promotional test from thirty-five points to forty points. And when they indicated that that was the only change that they were making, they basically said that, "We agree that in the future, we may disagree on some things, but right now, we want to work very closely with everybody. We know that Miami has a lot to do, especially with what we're doing with the comprehensive plan, a lot of the issues going on in Miami that we're recognizing and wanting to approach." And they basically said, "We want to be part of that, and we think right now, our efforts are better aimed at that rather than negotiation." So I'd like to read that under the record, that was their attitude, and I think it was a very positive attitude. So, without any hesitation, I'm just basically telling you that what they're saying is the contract doesn't exist right now. They want to continue that contract for another year, and we're certainly recommending that.
Okay, and that will take effect July one?
July one, correct.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the proposed contract?
Most approved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Sharbit?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Forrester?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Schultz?
Hi. The last item is adjourned, do we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Forrester?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, so I can clean up these.
Forrester?
Hi.
Schultz?
Hi.
Sharbit?
Hi.
Weston?